Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, December 18th, 2014 edition of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. Before we get started, I have to inform the audience that we are recording and we also are live right now. The meeting will be replayed later at the local access channel as well. Is anybody recording the meeting? I also have to ask that first. Hearing none, seeing none, okay. Our first hearing, the 7:00 PM, Javi Goldstein requesting a special permit under sections 4351 and 3262 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the operation of a motor vehicle service station, storage of liquid petroleum products in a Zone 3 Aquifer District, and for the removal of soils within 10 feet of the historical high ground level on property located at 17 Sibley Street, Auburn, Mass., map 61, parcel 22. The applicant here?
The applicant is President. Mr. Chairman, my way of introduction, Lawrence Roderick from Loffer and Fletcher Tiller, representing the petitioner, and I'm going to introduce some other folks, but to make it easier, I'm going to give you some business cards.
We appreciate it, sir. Thank you very much.
So we can have the names spelled correctly.
Thanks.
The other introductions I'd like to make are introduce Mike Jacobs, who's the principal of Litman and Cabado, which is a petition, also a principal of 17 Sibley Street LLC, which is going to be the operating entity, should be successful in the permitting process. Nelson Cabral, who's business card you have, from BJ's Wholesale Club. John Cusick from Boulder Engineering, who's going to go over the site plan in a few minutes. And John Guazik, who is going to be the petroleum engineer, who'll talk about the installation of the tanks. As a matter of background, the site is 17 Sibley Street. It's actually a 1.64 acre parcel located at the corner of Sibley Street and Washington Street, Route 20. It's at the west end, where the prime motor vehicle company is at the present time. It's in the HB Business District, Highway Business. It's in the Zone 3 Act for District. Project proposed is a BJ's gas mean station. There'll be eight fueling islands with 16 fueling positions in a 400 square kiosk. John's going to go through in great detail what it is. Access into the site is off of Washington Street, although there's no access. A regress onto Sibley Street. Access onto the site is by restricted right end moving off of Route 20 West, and you'd walk the same way restricted moving out of Route 20 West. As I said, John Cusick will present in detail in a minute. We have several permits which are being sought here, operating a gas mean station in the Highway Business District, in the Zone 3 District, the storage of the petroleum, and the issue of excavation to intend to be the seasonal high groundwater. There is also another permit that will be required by the applicant for not to report. All this presently under review is a site plan application. That's with the planning board. That one hearing on that has been continued. There is also a curb cut or a highway access permit, which will be required from the Mass Transportation. There'll be a few underground food storage campaigns that will have to be acquired from by Department of Labor Selecting, and there is a deeper review process, which also files in final qualification form. Although the curb cut is been applied for and is in process, the ENF has been filed at the moment, the application for this food store, so we would be completing hearings if we were successful. Let's start with John. Cusick, have you more over this, as a favor?
Absolutely, yes.
And then so, John, why don't you do the so engineering piece?
Thank you.
If you have any questions, please interrupt. I know you hesitate to do that, but you have the question as we go along.
Thank you. Sir, if you could state your name for the record, please?
For the record, John Cusick with Boulder Engineering.
Thank you.
I have on the board here, just a aerial overview, just so you get a sense of where the site is. Over here is the BJ's and the Home Depot. We've got Sibley Street, which is right, right over here. So as can be seen, we're located right on the corner. So the address is technically Sibley Street, but essentially it's accessed from. As can be seen, it's a big lot, a lot undeveloped. The site currently, drive by, it's a high point here and everything kind of drains down towards the back of the site and comes back this way. What I have on board is essentially just the site plan that we had prepared and filed with you folks. I have the landscape turned on and just colored up, so it's essentially the same materials that were submitted. What we are proposing, as was mentioned, is a gas fueling facility. There are eight islands located here, and there's a 400 square kiosk to the back. The kiosk for this type of an operation, if it's a private retail operation, maybe a seastore or anything like that, this is simply a kiosk where if somebody isn't paying with a credit card, as most customers do, they have the ability to pay at the kiosk. It's a very cool kiosk. Obviously, we'd have to have an accessible parking install and access. It's really the only way to park on the site. It's different than a typical gas station you may see for other end users. Access to the site is through two curb cuts. This is a divided highway, so we have a right end access here and a right out access there. Early on in the process, we looked at a bunch of different options, how to access the site. We actually had a scenario of the driveway here, full access, and full access here. Reviewed that with Mass DOT, and they didn't have an issue on their end from that. We looked a little bit closer, and we did think that would be as good of a fit here. We wanted to try to keep every, you know, all of our traffic on under 20 as opposed to the driveways on Sibley. So we kind of went back and came up with this ultimate design. We have reviewed this. We do have a pending application with Mass DOT. We have to review this preliminarily with them, by way of the site distances and all that. And based on preliminary meetings, everything was favorable to that. Obviously, we need a permit and that will dictate. We have prepared a full traffic analysis. The analysis does indicate that the roadway is certain adequate handle of the traffic for the, from the site. We have adequate site distance from the driveways back to the signals, probably where my hand is over here. That's currently under review with town's period review engineer, and we do not anticipate any issues. When we cited the plan, we have a pretty large site, 1.64 acres. You can typically get issues on a small lot, so it was nice that we had some ability to try to create, you know, not try to cram something in here. So what we want to do, we cited the site, the development, is we pushed everything to the side, as you can see. So we put the canopy right at the front yard setback, which allows a pretty significant green space over here. If you drive down Sibley Street, you've got a lot of large mature trees in this area. We're proposing to keep those intact to the extent we can. You can kind of see the tree line over here in this area. Additionally, we wanted to make sure we had a large buffer to the rear of the property as well. So we tried to balance all that and provide the buffering where it made sense to have the buffering and push the development against the outskirts, against commercial development here where it made more sense. Additionally, one of the benefits that we also have is, kind of traditional gas station, you might see when the loading truck comes in, the fueling for the truck is really in the middle of the lot. There's not really much separation between, you know, the customers of the facility and the folks who load the tanks. It's just the way it works in most stations. Based on the size of the lot, we had the ability to actually put a separated island right here. So when the loading truck comes in, they're absolutely, they're able to come in, take their right turn, park here directly over the tanks, that's separated by a hard island, so you don't have the situation where you have customers in the loading operations intermingling. Customers, when they do come into the site, as I mentioned, they utilize this driveway. They'll come up to the stacking lanes, they'll stack at the dispensers, and everything will happen in a counterclockwise direction in that alley. So it's, we have a nice clear traffic pattern. It won't be one of those situations where cars are going every which way. It's a very, very nice flow with the right in and right out. Cars are going to enter here, come in, get their fuel, come around, and then exit on the way. We have a trash enclosure, we located that, again, on the far end. It's fully enclosed, enclosed closure. As you can imagine, this way doesn't generate much, you know, much refuse, but we do provide that over here as well as an emergency generator. Again, we tried to be very thoughtful in placement of that where it all made sense. From a drainage and drainage standpoint, as I mentioned previously, the site, it's really got a high point over here, and it kind of slows down in this direction. When you drive by, you can see it actually slopes up, you've got about a six to eight foot hill almost, when you first come into the site, flattens out, and then heads back down. And we have close to 20 feet of grade rock between the front and the back. What we're proposing to do is essentially cut back this area over here, maximum cut of about six, seven, eight feet or so at the highest point, add a little bit of fill over here, two to three feet in that range. The drainage on the site will then be catch basins along from near the site. All of those will be coated, some catch basins, which would go to a stormwater quality unit located right about here, which would then discharge into a detention basin located here, which would then discharge out of the site, keep the drainage the way it's currently going today. No changes, and would obviously be reducing the flows, leaving the site. Groundwater on the site flows the same direction, and it's kind of heading out in that direction. We have conducted a series of testing on the property. We've conducted test pits for our drainage, as well as test borings, just to make sure we knew what groundwater was, ledge was, disconstructibility of everything. Of the eight borings and test pits that we had done, they went down up to 37 feet. Groundwater or ledge was not encountered in any of those. To be conservative, since you don't see it, to be conservative, you do a calculation, just for seasonal adjustment, you take the point at the bottom, as far as you dig, you put a calculation, it's called a fronter analysis, says, okay, theoretically, this would be where the seasonal high groundwater is. So based on that, seasonal high groundwater would be a few feet below where those tanks are. So again, that's a special term that we had requested from the board. But again, we have, I think, a very good situation. We have a pretty deep groundwater and no ledge. For the stormwater management system, it is 100% compliant with the Stormwater Management Guidelines. All the flows are reduced from the site. This has been reviewed by the town's peer review engineer. We received a comment letter back, very, very minor comment letter. They essentially agreed with the methodology, the methodology that we provided, the calculation we provided. They asked for just a minor tweak to the calculation, which we will be submitting back to the board. Does not change any of the analysis. They also just asked that we get with the DPD Director, just to review a drainage connection that we're showing up here. We currently discharge through an existing swale that goes down to the catch basin. They want us just to make sure that that was appropriate to them, and to make our pipe connection. Whatever he wants us to do, we're happy to do. Doesn't change any amount of water or where it's ultimately going. Utilities on the site, there's utilities, obviously, in this area, it's a commercial corridor. All of the utilities are available to access the property for connection. Landscaping, and like, as you can see, as I mentioned earlier, what we wanted to do, one of the goals, we really wanted to keep this mature vegetation along Sibley Street intact. There's no reason for us to impact it up towards the front, so we're keeping that there. We can have a small break, we're making a drainage connection here. And then what we wanted to do is make a really big landscape area here. So as you can see, we've got a pretty big variety of different trees, shrubs, ground cover, what have you, to provide significant buffer here. We also have a row of trees on this side. One thing that was requested of us at the planning board meeting, by the neighborhood delivery here, asked if we'd be willing to put a fence along the property line, which we are willing to do, certainly, and we're going to put that in submission back to the planning board as it was requested there. So that is something we'll add. They also asked if we could add a couple of trees along this area to buffer that further. You know, I think you can really see that, but we certainly have no issues with doing that, so I just want to bring that to your attention. And it's by way of lot lighting. We do have, the canopy obviously is lit, if we go to a gas station, you see the canopy lit underneath. There's a few primary lot lights around the site. All of the lot lights are downward facing, fully enclosed. There's no glare, no neon property lines, no lights sticking out below the bottom of the shield. So in summary, from the civil aspect, before I turn over to John, I think we had a real nice building, a base parcel that we have. Besides, we wanted to make sure that we maintain good access on the commercial quarter. We wanted to make sure we had adequate, and I'm asking more than that, we know it's a bunch of a buffer as much as we can do, we're well in excess of what's required by zoning. The buffers in this area, in that area, and then obviously, we wanted to make sure the traffic flow was something that made sense. With that, we have to turn it over to John to go into more details about the tanks and how that operation works, or I can answer the questions on this, whatever is, whatever you prefer.
I think we'll continue with the full presentation, then I'll open up to the members of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you could state your name for the record, please, sir?
Good evening. My name is John Guazik, and I work for a company called JDD Associates. We specialize in service station consulting. I'd like to go into a little more detail in terms of what's underground. The earlier John spoke about the home surface, and I'll get into all of various things that BJ's does to make this a very livable situation in terms of fire mentally, operationally. First of all, this site is nearby the BJ's Club, I want it, because, you know, to take up this amount of space on BJ's, that would be, you know, parking issues, so we have an opportunity to be nearby on a separate site. As John pointed out, we have a booth here for the consultant, I mean, yeah, Tom, the consultant, for the employees who supervise the fueling. Now, this is different from what you see a lot of times where they're operating cash registers, selling, you know, convenience store items, that kind of thing. BJ's employees operate the gas station only to keep everything in good running order and, you know, supervise what's going on. That's very important from the standpoint of operations. There's a lot of built-in goodies in the construction of this, starting with three tanks. We have two for regular, and one to split between premium and diesel. These are fiberglass tanks, non-rotatable and double wall. You can see that there's certain places where you see a bigger, what represents a manhole. Those are sumps in the tank, so the piping is contained at the point in the tank where the submersive pump is. What is commonly called pumps up here, which there are eight, each with the ability to serve one car on each side, these dispensers, and in between the dispensers and the tanks is double wall piping, which is monitored at the sum. Should anything get out or into the sumps, there's monitors there that'll come alarm there that the supervisory personnel can keep an eye on. Underneath the each dispenser, similarly, there's a sum that is monitored there as well. So every place that the piping would emerge, there is monitoring, and in between, it's one solid piece of pipe, piping welded to the sum, so the water can't get in, product can't get out. Not everybody does that, but BJ's does. At the far right here, we have multi-product dispensers that have diesel as well as gasoline. The other six are just gasoline. This is not expected to be anything that semi-trucks would come into, and in fact, they'd find it uncomfortable, and it's not as fast as what they do at truck stops. This is really designed for regular, you know, class one vehicles that, you know, pay class one tolls. So as John pointed out, deliveries occur down here, deliveries use vapor recovery, you know, so there isn't any smell of gasoline during deliveries. In fact, it's the law, you have to use that. The canopy is equipped with a fire suppression system, positive limiting barrier for Massachusetts State Fire Department requirement. So should there be a drip, you know, like if you pull the nozzle out, it drips. Anything that gets on the concrete slab here runs a positive limiting barrier there to lay and eventually dry out, or in the case of the fire suppression system, should somebody light something up, the fire suppression system can cover everything out of the positive limiting barrier. Overall, BJ's operates the gas stations in a channelized fashion, so that everybody goes the same way, you don't have people backing up, and the supervisory personnel see to that. I'm sure if you've been to BJ, you see that's how it works. This type of situation is called a starter beat layout, meaning that, you know, you can see all the pumps, and, you know, you can see the difference between this and if you had a pump behind a pump, you can't always see what's open and what isn't, and that's where you get into traffic conflicts and so forth. So this is very clean and should be very effective. It should really never have any traffic jams, but let's say the price is so low. Nobody worries about price today. Six months ago, you did, but, you know, when it gets, BJ's is typically a lot cheaper than everybody else even when the price is low, but, you know, there's a lot of room. There's room for probably three or four cars easily to stack up here, so they've given you a lot of room in here. Of course, this is enough room for the cars to exit, so everything is generally operating in a counterclockwise direction. That is basically the, you know, coach tour of the fueling system. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you might have.
Thank you very much.
I omitted one additional permit, which will be required if we are successful, and that's when I have to come back, the signage. You have a copy of the signage package in the PIP, the technicals given to the board, but the roster signs do require special permits. It's not, it seems to be a very conservative sign package, I might, but it does require special permits, so we have to come back for that. The petitioner received, John filled out all responses to the questions, again, if you respond to the special permit section. I think that, you mentioned already, and I mentioned already, we're from the planning board for site plan approval. Peer review's already been done on civil engineering, traffic review's underway, should be put back at the next planning board meeting in early January. Before we go, if you have questions, I would add, what makes very common sense, but needs to be stated, I think, is that when you're talking about gas stations these days, or anything, the property owner or the operator are very concerned with their own liability and as a consequence, these are conservatively designed to head off limit, try to cut off altogether any liability for the ownership that be a spill. Point is, they're designed so still are the least possible, they're done so still at the least possible edge of whatever life, whatever occurrence is might be. Doesn't mean they don't have, but the design is there to take care of the head and mark, and if they do occur, to be able to recover without having liability or ground contamination.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no further presentation, I'm going to open up to the members of the board. Do you have anybody else to speak? No? Mr. Chacol, do you have any questions or comments?
Question. What are the hours of operation going to be?
Director Nelson Cabral, BJ's Wholesale. Our typical hours of operation, we open at 6:30 AM, and we typically close a half hour after the club, which in this case would be 9:30. And on Sundays, we generally have an earlier closing time. It varies throughout the chain. I can verify what the Sunday hours are for club and offering. Generally, it'd be a half hour after the club, it's 7:00 close, and we'd be closing at 7:00. But we are not a 24-hour operation.
That's good.
And Mr. Roder, you stated about a permit for the sign. Were you referring to the signage that you've given us pictures of, or the sign that will go, I'm assuming, 12 feet or so off the street?
You have that in the package as well, I think, the signage for lots.
Is it? Okay, I didn't get that.
And I'm specifically talking about that one. That exceeds the gross area by six or seven square feet somewhere like that.
Okay, thank you.
It states that on that form, I had to review it after having had the packages, and I don't think the sign company took into account the digitized area.
That's good, because that's way too.
This next thing that I mentioned may sound petty to somebody, but having had friends that lived near a gas station, the refuse trucks would come in and make an awful racket. And naturally, they'd try to get there early in the morning before, you know, business really got going. And they would make an awful racket. Where is the, are the refuse dumps that's going to be placed?
It'd be right over here.
Again, I'm not trying to sound petty or anything, but I've had friends who've experienced it.
Absolutely, yeah. But we wanted to do it, and again, this, without the seastore, there's no food or anything like that, which would generate a lot. This is a very low, low generation. It would be located right over here, and we want to put it as far away as possible to any of the sensitive letters, and keep it closer to the commercial doors.
Okay. And you mentioned that you're going to have the groundwater exit the property on Sibley Street. Are you going to tie into the manhole, or is it going to flow onto the street? The reason I ask the question, if you had weather like this upcoming winter, it'd be an awful patch of ice there.
Right. It frankly depends on what DPW Director wants us to do, we're willing to do whatever. And by that, I mean, right about here, there's a catch basin out in the street.
Is it ahead of, is it ahead of the driveway for that house?
Yes. Yeah, it's ahead of the driveway, and there's a small swale that heads up. We were proposing just to put the flow coming from that into that swale, which would go to the catch basin. Again, if the DPW Director wants us to hard pipe it to that, we certainly might do that.
That's all I have for now, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Maron, do you have any questions?
I'd like to hold any questions and see if there are any abutters at this time.
Okay.
I'd like to wait and see if there are any abutters, that I have any comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Please?
Just one question. How far from the light is the first entrance, from the traffic light?
Yeah, it was below 300 feet to the first entrance, and the second was 1.64, 450, somewhere in that range.
Okay. Okay. One more question. In the back there, will they, that person be taking cash? My question is for security for them, that person there, so he'll be taking cash fees?
Yeah, typically, yeah.
The kiosk is designed such that it houses two attendants.
Okay.
There is a walk-up window for cash transactions. The other thing we run into is because if members who swipe membership cards, a lot of times they'll come and realize that they need to renew their membership.
Okay.
So they have the ability... The attendant will get a little notification. Customers will get a notification to see the attendant. They can then renew their membership at the kiosk, which in this case is a nice convenience because typically you have to send it back to the club.
Yeah, across the street. There'll always be two attendants there for security?
Yeah, for this type of facility, having sort of the mobile configuration from the club. We certainly have that.
Yeah, good. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Roach?
Just my one question now is, so if you're traveling eastbound, then obviously you have very easy access in one way, get your gas out the other way. But if you're traveling westbound and you're at the light at BJ's, my just concern is the flow of people trying to make a U-turn at that light to get in is... What's their... You know, if they do do that, are they able to make the U-turn and get into that first driveway?
Yeah, very good question. We wanted to make sure of that as well. That was a whole part of the traffic study, discussion with Mass DOT before we had the study. Because you're spot on as you're coming down, down this way, coming in, you're coming out, you're coming from the other direction. How would you get there if you wanted to, if you wanted to go there? So you would make a U-turn at the light. There is adequate...
Plenty of access to it.
Yeah, adequate, you know, drive through, excuse me, I will live at capacity of the signal, no issues. That was fully addressed in the report, which will be again reviewed by the town's consultants.
Yeah, and you get a lot of traffic though there. People will make U-turns to get good gas price. So I just want to make sure that's... That's my only question for now.
Okay. Well, I think most of my questions have been answered, actually. Part of the traffic study that you had mentioned, I'm sorry if I... If you may, please. If you're pulling up the hill towards that light and you do want to make a U-turn, I'm assuming that part of the engineer... Traffic study, is that, you know, going to reconfigure that intersection somewhat in order to accommodate you or is that not going to happen?
No, I don't think it was needed. Based on what was there, the signals were adequate as well, so there wasn't any additional label needed.
Great, okay.
We have the ability here, I'm sure a lot of times you have noticed in the driving as well. There's probably a tenor of a shoulder on the side of the road. It's pretty wide there. We usually don't have that benefit going in. In this case, it was actually quite a bit of... Quite a bit of road.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any abutters present? No abutters. Okay. Mr. Maron, would you like to go back and ask questions then?
I just... Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a follow-up question regarding the site. I think this is an extremely well-designed site, and I thank you for the background, gentlemen. The question I had was on just site planning. What was mentioned was that, was it ever considered as an option on the BJ's site where it is now? And I know that parking was mentioned as a deterrent from that. And knowing that BJ's site quite well, I just wondered if you could provide some additional background on why such a remote site, if you will?
Well, it just so happens that BJ's attempted to get the gasoline facility on that site. And I don't know by my own memory how many years ago I represented them at that time. It was seven, eight, could be 10 years ago. And it just was, we did not get the permits part on that site. It was due to a myriad number of concerns. But so it has been, it was looked at, and we did years ago before anybody other than me that's involved here was privy to this project. It was not, we did not get the permits.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. I appreciate the background. I don't have any additional questions, Mr. Chairman. I would say, I think that it's extremely well-designed. Being very familiar with the BJ's site, I still have a curiosity on why they wouldn't put it up in that far back lot. But I respect your comments that if it was impossible to permit based on parking or whatever, whatever the other obstructions were, I think this is extremely well-done for the site they have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments at all?
I'm sure the answer's going to be yes, but just, storage of any of the liquid, all of those have been designed up to whatever the state, the Fire Marshal, the code requires. I'm sure it's yes, but for the record.
I would have felt left out if there wasn't a follow-up question. This meets or exceeds all requirements of federal code regulations, 40 CFR 280. So everything is double, everything's spill containment, some's monitored. BJ's goes above and beyond the minimum requirements in every case. And of course, Massachusetts is the home of National Fire Protection Association, you know, the State Fire Marshal very involved in gas stations. So how do you define it to come along?
And also, could I just ask, in the kiosk, so are you going to have any types of automotive-related fluids for sale in there at all? Any oil, antifreeze, windshield washer fluid?
Not ordinarily. I don't know. In this case, no. I don't have this data.
The reason I ask is because you know there's a lot of self-serve gas stations. I know this isn't a full self-serve model, but again, it's the additional products that I just hadn't heard about yet.
Yeah, if a lot of the gas program really is essentially a, you know, a membership-driving convenience to our customers. So our gas stations don't typically sell anything other than fuel and the occasional membership renewal. If there was a demand for, say, windshield wetter fluid, you know, scrapers during the wintertime, things of that nature, we would visit that. And I know that there are certain business licenses that we have to get, probably have to come back and report to this board. But at this time, we're strictly focused on selling fuel and the occasional membership.
Okay.
Or new membership if a non-member decided to. Fuel at the facility and wanting to purchase a membership.
Okay.
Have a solid.
Thank you. Okay, any further questions?
I just have one final question, Mr. Chairman. I can just revisit, I know that was mentioned, a request from the planning board, an agreement to put a fence on that backside for the abutters. And I appreciate your willingness to do so. I'm not looking to explore that, but could you speak to the lighting? If I'm not taking the position of an abutter, but given that they're not here, is there any impact to lighting based on the late hours of operation on that backside where the abutters are present?
No. The lighting, again, as I mentioned, it was designed such that fully enclosed light features, downward flowing, would have a back shield on it as well. It was zero spillage over the wall lights. Yeah, exactly. And it was additionally too, as mentioned over here, we wanted to have some of those trees. We have a mix of flow and eyes, so again, a lot of times we'd bump against a tree. Even if there was something, the tree would block it. So for that, but again, it's not anything that we have any spillage whatsoever.
Thank you for addressing it. Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on the floor regarding the proposal? Yes. And if also, if you have any conditions that were mentioned during the presentation?
Then I'll make a motion to approve a special permits under Section 3.1 and Section 4.3.5.1 and Section 3.2.6.2.
Do I have a second?
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any conditions before we move on?
None.
None?
Okay.
Congratulations. Good luck. We'll issue the permits. If there are any other questions or comments, I'm sure somebody will be in touch with the town hall.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. Okay. We'll see you then, Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Roach.
We'll start the next hearing in a moment. I'm just going to let them clear out a little bit. Okay, we have a continuation from November 20th, 2014. Our applicant is Welcome Homes Incorporated requesting a special permit under Section 3.2.2.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for construction of a two-family dwelling on Elmwood Street, Rear Gibson Road, Auburn, Mass., map 12 parcel 208. And the applicant's present, I take it? Could you... Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Do I have a motion on open hearing?
Motion open hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Director, my name's Patrick Burke. City of Lawrence, Garrett and Jessup, representing Welcome Homes Inc. Here with Peter Howard, I represent Welcome Homes Inc. Previously, we've come in requesting a special permit to construct five two-family homes on Gibson Road. Based on the comments of last hearing, we needed the layout created. We're not proposing requesting two single-family homes.
I can barely hear you.
Yes, we're requesting two family homes currently now on lots 3, 4, and 7. Lots 5 and 6, we're... We're also improving Gibson Roads, as we were doing before, with public water, public utilities, and servicing the road, apparently the ground road. We've been working closely with Bill Coyle, town engineer, and his staff. And he suggested that we revisited the design with a couple alternatives. He had suggested we do two-to-one slopes that can be vegetated with a rose control mat until it stabilizes, which we're doing now. We had originally come in with a 12-foot wall that spanned the first four lots, and multiple walls, lot 7, and cul-de-sac. We were able to eliminate the 12-foot wall, first four lots, which we revisited the zoning bylaws. Peter's also a building inspector, to see if there were any other name from the zoning or planning board regulations. Whereas zoning court right now, we'd only requirement would be to come in and receive the plan, but it was two lots. We previously would have required over an inch of wall, required the yard setbacks, but we're not close to that anymore. We're already with a recreated whole site. Lot 7 has some walls that are in the yard setbacks, and lot 6 at the end of the cul-de-sac. But we do have seven now. Right now, we're under review with the planning board, also with Bill Coyle, to do the grading work two-to-one. We want to make sure this is working. We're seeking permits for Phil in the planning board. Benefits for the site of recreating Gibson Road, utilities and stuff along Gibson Road, stabilizing the road, if I just don't want to manage the system that's better than what's out there, is nothing right now. Better than what I have right now.
Good. Mr. Chacolo, do you have any new questions?
I think I am going to take the same road that Mr. Maron took earlier and reserve comment and questions until I hear from the abutters, because it looks like we've got plenty of them here.
Mr. Maron?
Mr. Chacolo had stole my thunder here. And so I won't ask questions just for the sake of asking them. I would make a comment, though, to both of you gentlemen, that I appreciate the amount of work that you put forward and the, essentially, the contemplation from last meeting and coming back with a new design. I do have some questions about the change in... I don't know that I completely understand specifically the change in wall structures that you had mentioned, but I would reserve some of those questions. It sounds like it's a redesign based on the combination of single and two-family. And so, and you said, just to confirm, that the max height in the new proposal would be a max height of a seven-and-a-half foot wall in certain... Just a certain area?
Yes, maximum say, in between lots 7 and 6 at the end, within the yard setback. There are on lot 7, because of the steep slope there, outside of the yard setbacks, walls will have a problem with that.
Okay. And I don't want to make you repeat, but how were you able to take, by changing that configuration, how were you able to eliminate that extensive wall that you proposed previously, if that makes sense?
Previously, we were waiting for a ground in a two-to-one slope. So we were instructed by the town engineer, two-to-one slope, required a ground. So we had a three-to-one slope, then revisited and went to the site, worked with them, thought this would be a better idea to allow vegetation to eventually come up the hill. This will allow the long seed to establish itself and the trees can come back up to the hill. So it's a steeper slope, and it was allowing for vegetation.
Okay. And I, again, I apologize for making you repeat some of that. I didn't catch all of it at first glance, but I'd like to reserve the balance of questions for the abutter discussion.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Blais?
I have no questions right now. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I'm waiting until...
I thought so. Give the opportunity. Okay, do we have any abutters present that would like to speak this evening?
For the record, Robert Anastasi, live at 166 Hampton Street. I see it's definitely an improvement over the last design, given the level of congestion that you would have of five duplexes. And not to give, not to mention the amount of noise and light pollution that would have, given such a small, one-way, I wouldn't say one-way street, but one outlet street. One concern I do have is, how exactly are you choosing to widen your permit? Is the... Why is it going to take place on the side of the public properties or on the side where the construction is going to take place? The roadway is actually, we're just repaving the area. We're not widening the roadway off. Because a roadway is existing, we're just repaving these 20-foot wide roadway along the... This is going to be the area for... But it's already... We're waiting on, I'd say, the cul-de-sac. They're getting their initial area. Want to make one comment, too. So it wasn't clear. It's where the roadway we're proving is two 20-foot rights away, and we're improving the one closest to our ground. I just want to...
Thank you.
Okay. And yeah, I just want to reiterate, obviously not my first choice, but I definitely think...
think single-family homes are more, fit more fit the character of the neighborhood, and especially more fitting to this property. Those were the points that I made at the last.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Good evening.
Hello, I'm Churchill Waldrich, we live at 15 Gibson Road.
15 Gibson.
Well, my question is, um...
I'm sorry, but you can just spell your last name for me, please? Waldridge.
So, our playground is at the very end of the cul-de-sac, and what I was curious about, we had a wonderful snowstorm, great rain, we heard like inches and inches of mud right after that ended. The water still going to be, is there, will it be ready to set up? I know you're working on that. Will it still be any way so it's not falling into our property, and I'm not getting my car stuck just outside of the cul-de-sac? So, that's where I'm really concerned, is because we did, this time, there was more water than usual, where I'm having to get in and out of my car, and I do a lot of traveling for my work, so I'm coming in and out, and my car was, it took a while to get out of mud.
Yeah, so this time, pretty much what happened is, coming down this side of the street, over here, the water was pretty much pouring straight down, and the other person who worked on this before, said he was putting drainage and everything underneath, and it doesn't look like that's got done, because basically it's all piled up.
Yeah.
So, that last storm poured down this side.
We think this is north side.
Basically, it was about six inches deep on our bottom stairs.
Yeah.
So, you can see.
And then it was a skating rink for a while, too, which was also a lot of mud.
It's nice.
Yeah, that's still an issue that we are having regarding the drainage. I do want to thank you very much for having whoever it was with the excavator, because that was a huge issue on Thanksgiving, but that made it a lot better. But we still have, again, just right where our yard is, and our stairs, and this a big deep hole of water and mud and ice. Oh, sorry.
Lost our microphone? For the folks at home, we're just experiencing some technical difficulties, doing clearing up right now, so please stand by. Never a dull moment at a CBA meeting. Test. Loud and clear. I hear you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, if you could just briefly go over what your issue was again, please, because I don't think the people at home could hear it, or we had it recorded properly?
All right, if I stand here and object, is that loud enough? Yeah. So, our property is here, and we have usage of it here, so we park our cars here, and our yard is this little corner here.
Okay.
And what happened is, with all the, with the snow and the drainage, we had a big swimming pool right at the end of this, and pushing into the rack there, but mostly going into our yard where our cars were, I was having a really difficult time getting my car, which was a sedan, I don't find here one as unique as a sedan, which I need, getting out of that, and then coming down our stairs, which come down here, and this part here is still our used to be water, that was about six inches of water and ice in mud, and that was dangerous for people coming in and out of the house.
Okay, yeah, so before, normally, when we'd have water that would come down, it would go out this way, and normally it would be over in this section, and it would just go down over the hill.
Yeah.
Because that's where the drainage was set up.
Right.
Now, it seems to be coming down and pooling over in this section.
Right here.
And that road, although graded, is pretty much unfinished at this point, right? There's, I think, what, maybe like the equivalent of road grindings on that right now, roughly?
Yeah, yeah, there's the recycled asphalt product.
Yes, sorry. Yeah, and that's what it is, and I don't know if the paving is going to help that unless they actually put more specific drainage.
Underneath.
That's going to go there, because this is raised up now, so the water comes to us as opposed to down the cliff that we're used to.
Sure.
So, we already had a problem with drainage, but now it's worse.
So, as a suggestion, it would probably be helpful if this does occur during the rest of this construction project, is maybe take some pictures with your phone, you know, have something as a reference, whether it be a yardstick, or a ruler, or some other,
okay? Type of implement to show some scale. Okay.
And certainly, we'll give the opportunity to have them address this.
All right.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you care to step up to the mic and address those issues, please?
Currently, with the gravel road, there's no stormwater control at all going out there, so it just hits the road and goes wherever. There's no uniform grade out there constantly. When we pave the road, we're going to be curving both sides of it, and we'll actually be capturing more of the water with the cul-de-sac that would typically go to the end of the road, catching, getting in a catch basin, and then redirecting it down away from that property. So, with the uniform grades and everything, and the road with the stormwater directed that comes off the hill to Gibson Road currently, is going to be captured in the pavement and directed to a catch basin and piped into the detention basin.
Thank you. Any of the other abutters, please? Just state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Hi, my name's Stephen Knott, I live at 90 Elmwood, I'm right on the corner there, between Elmwood and Gibson. Basically, I just have a few concerns. The one concern is, it does look like the easements and the setbacks were met, is that true on that print?
It does appear as such, yes.
Okay, so those are all the 20 and 10-foot setbacks and 20-foot easements? Okay. My other concern is, somebody brought up a mention on the last board meeting about refuse trucks getting in and out of these areas. The one problem I have is, my, my electric comes off of Gibson Road, it doesn't come off of Elmwood. Due to coming off of Gibson Road, the cable and telephone hang real low over the road. I don't see those trucks, those big garbage trucks, making it in there at that point in time without taking the wires out. Just one thing I have a general concern about. The other concern about I have is, they were discussing smaller walls going across the property in the back. I was just wondering about some information on the smaller walls, if they're going to be sectioned out to each individual house, or if it's going to be the solid wall going all the way across all the houses. How do you manage a solid wall going across all the houses, if for some reason something were to happen with the wall, or anything like that? And with the walls, how does that affect the drainage that goes, that keeps going down the hill? And my only other concern is, you know, my other abutter that came in and said the same thing about, you know, we lived in this neighborhood as a single-family neighborhood, you know, we sought out and we looked for these houses in single-family neighborhoods. I know it's not technically a zoning issue about preferring not to have duplexes in your neighborhood, but I would like some consideration, just to be heard about it, that we would like to keep the neighborhood a single-family neighborhood. That's all I really have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
With the degrading plan, we've eliminated the walls on the first three lots, lots 3, 4, and 7, I mean, 3, 4, and 5. The main walls are predominantly on lot 7, and with a little extension onto lot 6, which we can, if we need to, we can regrade the walls to keep them on lot 7, or provide an easement. Also, we'll be contacting during construction, the utility vendors, and we can address the little wires, that'll be a concern for us, too, during construction.
Anyone else? Just state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Dan Cooney, High Ridge Road, 6 High Ridge Road. The only question I'm asking, I don't see it on the paper over here on this, there's supposed to be, just because, this swale going across it, is that still going to be there? I know you haven't attempted yet, you're doing the wall, because my concern is, is the back of these houses here, I'm going to get buried, I'm going to be on, you know, Tibet over here, Mount Everest, because that stuff is still, I haven't seen a rock, you guys have solved that problem, no rocks, plenty of water, you know, big-time water, silt, but I mean, it's almost impossible to stop, but once they start filling that in, you know, put walls or whatever, you're going to get buried. So, if there's a way to stop that, I guess, you know, I'm not happy about duplexes either, but it's not my concern, I just don't want to get drowneded. And I'm getting that again right now.
Okay.
That's all I get, concern I can say, is that he's saying he's putting this swale in, that's fine, I'm sure that will catch something. At least Colamo's down there can have the water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Part of the requirements with the drainage for the two lots currently under construction on Elmwood Road, Bill Coyle had asked us to provide this swale that's going to continue to the detention basin, too, which will capture some of the water coming off the hill, and he wants us to divert, Bill asked us to divert it beyond his property to the existing shed over here.
Mm-hmm.
So, that will alleviate some of the problem.
Okay, and I anticipate that, are you going to allow the natural vegetation to return? Are you planting trees, and what do we, you know, in order to contain the slope, I'd like to learn a little bit more about that.
Yeah, we were going to let the natural vegetation come back, there'll be a fence on the top of the flat area behind the yards that'll restrict access to that slope and provide some safety factor there, and also, especially under the town engineer, is we're going to vegetate it, first loma seed and let the trees recapture the hill.
Okay, thank you. So, now, I'd like to open up, oh, I'm sorry, do we have any more abutters who'd like to speak? Okay, hearing unseen, then? Mr. Chikolo?
I've heard a lot of talk about the walls from the last meeting being a little bit different, and we've been talking about the swale to cut, to take care of the water. The swale that you're referring to was put in place, or going to be put in place, as a result of the two houses that are currently there, correct?
Correct.
But, any work you're doing here, there's no swale that's been commanded of you for these houses that you're thinking of putting in. And my question is going to be, you've talked about walls, you've talked about the swale, I assume you're going to have to move some dirt? Has any of this that you're referring to, the changes or additions, been approved by the planning board?
They've not been approved by the planning board, but they've been strongly suggested by the town engineer. We've been working close in hand with him to, this is the design he preferred, and they're leaning heavily on his opinion.
I still have, I have real, real concerns about the impact on the people surrounding there. You're putting in single families, two families, the impact that you have had and will have until something is put in place, I think is a real serious issue.
That is the existing condition now, there, that's, the town engineer wants us to address this as quickly as possible. It is under review by the planning board right now.
I think that, I think that that issue is, is really, what I would say, I would be, I would say I'd be in favor or opposed because of that issue, the impact that you've had and are still having. Go ahead.
The one thing, the, when we, building inspector issued the occupancy permit at 88 Elmwood Street, he conditioned the rest of this project in all lots to not be able to proceed further until the as-built, which includes the swale, is in place. That's already currently conditioned. You could also condition it as well.
Has the design of the swale been put in place?
That's all been approved by the town engineer and the building inspector, yes.
But you're, you still haven't got your planning board approval for that?
That, that particular plan for the swale was not required with planning board approval. Part of the review with the planning board, we're in front for a special permit for earth fill. Part of the review is, we provided a drainage report and the grading, and it's under review currently by the town engineer. They will have to approve the drainage and the mitigation measures to even get the earth fill permit, and without their earth fill permit, we can't build these houses as shown here.
That's all I have for now.
I'm sorry, could you just spell your name for the record again, please?
Sure, it's Peter Haugue, H-A-U-G-E.
H-A-U-G-E. And you said it's Peter, first name?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chikolo. Mr. Maron, give me...
No additional questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Blais?
No, just comment, I appreciate the work that you put into it to redesign it, I think you've done a great job doing that, and I think you've pleased most of the abutters with your, with your changes, so thank you.
Ms. Roach?
So, just back to the concern, because I agree that I think there is nothing worse than having water in your house, it is absolutely the most devastating, annoying thing ever. So, your position is that before anything else could happen on this, before the building can actually start, that the swale has to be addressed?
That's already a condition, yes.
First thing that's going to be done?
I can't even get, I can't even get an occupancy permit on the house that's under construction right now, until that swale is built, and the certified as-built, as-built is prepared by HSNT and approved by the town.
Just so I'm clear, which is the house that's being built right now?
86, it's the one with the double wall here.
Yeah, okay, that's ours, okay. I don't have any other questions.
Obviously, I think you've put a good faith effort into this whole project to get to this point so far, and I appreciate you hearing the concerns of the abutters. One of the things I would like to actually talk to the abutters directly about is, that with the onset of winter coming here, ground freezing soon, water, I'd like to try to get the issue resolved to you as well, sooner rather than later. So, with respect to all parties concerned, I'd like to know if you are satisfied with all of your questions, concerns, before we move forward. That's really what I'd like to make sure that everybody is satisfied here before we move forward. So, if any of you would like to come up and readdress, given the new information, I would have that opportunity for you. And then again, we'll also let you come back up at the end before we do.
Stephen Knott, 90 Elmwood Street. Essentially, I have nothing more to say, other than just a general plea to understand that the abutters, myself, are just generally concerned having dual, two-family houses in there. are just generally concerned having dual, two-family houses in there. Um, it's kind of a, a slippery slope, pardon the pun, in this general, but, uh, to come here with concrete evidence, evidence to, to try to get something, uh, changed is different than just pleading and not liking the general construction of what's going on. I spoke with Peter when I first, when he first started building this project, I actually helped Peter facilitate building some of the two houses here with letting him use some water, other things to help build the houses. At that point in time, it was all single-family homes that where he was trying to go in here. I have absolutely no problem with development of single-family homes in an area where there are single-family homes, but generally, it's just a general concern of duplexes and change of plans that are going through, and the delays and everything else that are happening. Um, I'm just pleading with the board and generally you, Peter, alone, um, to please reconsider and just, I don't think anybody would have any problems with putting single-family homes in here, um, and that's, that's about it, thank you very much.
Would any members of the board care to address his concerns?
I mean, I certainly can appreciate that, I, I, I think it's, it is a valid concern, but I think his alternative then would to put ten single-family homes, um, which doesn't change really the amount of, you know, traffic or cars and things like that, 'cause in theory that could be the same amount of occupants, um, but I do, I, I certainly do think it's a valid concern.
Also, um, as we discussed briefly at the last meeting, is that with these gentlemen coming before us to get the permits with the, uh, multi-family homes or the duplexes, we have the ability to put conditions on those permits. If they so choose to withdraw this and go to all single-family homes, then this board has no authority over what they wanna do to develop that, and therefore, may not be able to have a positive impact on your water management issues that you're having there as well. So I think that might be, or should be looked upon as a reasonable compromise, just in my humble opinion, and again, I'd like you to come back up and address if you'd care to, but again, this is the opportunity for us to, uh, correct some issues.
Is there any way that we could govern the single-family homes that are put in there? If you, you know, i- is there anything that's saying if you do say no to this, is there a stipulation or anything that you could put on that this particular property is monitored? That I don't know how that works on the inside of things.
From a zoning board point of view, uh, if they chose to withdraw and went with single-family homes only, this matter would be out of our hands completely, we would have no authority over it whatsoever, but by, with their compromise going with the single-family and the duplexes combined, uh, that's, opportunity still lies with us to control the slope down the hill and the water management and things like that.
But for the single-family homes, if you would have to extend this road to put the ten single-family homes in, would that fall under your jurisdiction to work on that single-family or if you have to extend the road down there?
As designed as is now, um, they're only proposing what you see for building there. The ten, um, lots, if the town allowed them, you know, based on square footage to break those up, we would have no authority over that whatsoever.
Other than passing the proper building codes?
And that would be it, pulling the permits, passing the codes. And I think, um, and I agree, I understand the concern with the duplexes, but, um, at the last meeting, they showed a plan for those, and quite honestly, they're pretty attractive buildings as well, I'm not sure how you feel about that, but I was pretty impressed with them myself.
Well, I mean, you could put a mansion up and put ten families up next to me, and, you know, you're still forty feet away from my house with four families.
Sure, I understand that.
You know, where I didn't, I didn't buy that house in consideration of that, and if you're talking about resale value on a house, you know, my house is curb appeal is different now due to I have four families living, again, within forty feet of my side door.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, as you know, I just spent a lot of money and tried to do things that are gonna make my house more appealing to curb appeal when I do decide to sell that house and move on. Um, I wasn't planning on living there my whole life, but, uh, this is gonna put a damper in the plans about reselling a home with, again, four families living very close next door, and, um, you know, the way that my house is situated, um, I had to come before the board just to get the, um, approval to go over the easement and the, the setback lines, uh, even when there was no houses there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I took into consideration doing things properly and taking every step I could to make it, um, appealing, being that it is a, a very large wall trying to hold up my house that side because of the grave sloping, um, so I did everything in my power to make it appealing to everybody else, so, again, I'm just generally concerned, unfortunately.
I do understand that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knott.
Mr. Marin?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman, I, for the sake of conversation, I'd, I'd like to just share, and I know that there's, there's a lot of discussion on design of single versus duplex, but from my vantage point, regardless of the number of units, single or duplex, I, I do have faith in the planning board and, and other authorities, that the water would still have to be addressed, that even if this plan were retracted and they went all single-family homes, the water issue from a planning board perspective, certainly not speaking for, for that board, but from a permitting perspective, from a planning board perspective, um, the engineering and the water concerns would still have to be addressed.
I agree.
And, and so I, uh, but, but I also wanna compliment your approach and, and certainly wanting to address the abutters in a, in a, if they had to choose, you know, what, what route would, would they wanna choose? Um, but I, but I just wanted to make that statement that I, I feel strongly and I, and I do appreciate the work that the planning board and other authorities would do, regardless of what this configuration ends up to be, that, that would have to be addressed. Um, I share other concerns of, um, immediate remediation, and I know that these gentlemen have already made steps, um, in, in the recent weeks, uh, to, to do some of those things on, on what the site looks like, um, but I would, I would just share those comments on, on the water, the water issues.
Thank you. And also to clarify, uh, as Mr. Marin stated, granted, other boards would have authority over this, that you would be able to go see in front of, uh, but this is our opportunity to take care of, of the issues that you're having, so that's where I wanna make that clear as well, so thank you for that. Um, anyone else? Yes, please, by all means.
Again, thank you to the board and to Peter for letting us have this say too. Um, my general concerns are more just how these issues keep popping up, um, based on planning and things, and, um, and just, mm, we're going to as many other board meetings as possible, 'cause we're not sure, you know, what we can do, like if I were to take pictures of the water and issue, I don't know who I would send that to, um, things like that, to just keep abreast of who we have options to speak with, or, or what we can't, what, basically, not knowing what the options are is a little hard, 'cause I'm sitting like, I, I know I wanna say something, but I don't know exactly what to say, I don't know, um, I just think, uh, with the duplex part of it, um, just the amount of traffic on the street, un- unless I've seen the changes, you know, I mean, see more of what's gonna be taken care of, I'm gonna, and, uh, uh, Mr. Knott's had given us the idea of the, we have a special trash truck that comes down because we have these low hanging wires, um, so those would have to be rerouted if it's gonna be a paved street for trash to come down, um, and I hadn't even thought of that, but that's a definite thing to consider is the electricity is gonna be adjusted, our cable's gonna be adjusted, 'cause our wires also, going down to fifteen Gibson Road, are very low, they do not have the clearance for a full-size trash truck, we just have a smaller pickup that comes down, same with the recycling. So those are also concerns that I hadn't even thought of until they were brought up. Um, so I guess there's an overall amount of concern that I'm not sure how much has gone into being informed on all our parts and planning to actually accomplish this, so that, that is my overall concern.
So, um, now that, maybe you could clear it up for me, you have a, uh, I'm assuming you're using waste management, the town service?
Yes, but a special truck has to come down.
Okay, so are they backing down and turning around, or how does that work?
Yes, they're backing down and turning around.
Okay, so they do have the ability with the vehicle that they have right now to actually go down, turn around on the cul-de-sac and pull back out, so they're not backing all the way down, backing, you know, and then pulling out?
Right.
Okay.
So they are able to, but they were able to do that before then.
Right, okay.
Um, that's always been there, but whenever bad weather hits, like winter and stuff, we've gone weeks where we're like holding our trash, 'cause they can only take three bags at once, um, so it, with it getting worse on that, if we just start having rainstorms and those issues aren't addressed, you know, trash builds up, and, and again, we've had to have FedEx trucks and UPS trucks get towed out of there. So that, the, the paving is probably gonna fix that, I don't know how much though, but coming down for a larger truck would be harder.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments from the abutters? Okay, any other members of the board? Would you gentlemen care to close with, uh, any, addressing any of the comments you've heard?
I'd just like to, um, say thank you to the abutters for showing up, I know there's a lot going on in their neighborhood, and I personally feel responsible for what goes on over there, and I do wanna apologize to the abutters for the first site guy that I had hired, did a terrible job and terrible service to me, and he hasn't been working with me for probably four or five months now, he's a guy, I don't wanna name his name, I don't, I don't wanna, he sued for slander, but I do believe he misled just about every person, uh, that's sitting over there as an abutter, um, the things that he said that I said, that just didn't happen, and, um, I've always been, tried to be upfront with all the abutters on what my intent, what was. Um, the, the big change for me, when we did change, uh, from single families to, to duplexes was really due to the significant cost overrun and delays when the town, um, uh, switched building inspectors, and then there was a halt on my project for months and months and months, and engineering got involved with the fill permit that was required, so I'm basically trying to recover, um, you know, financially, and I'm trying to figure out the best way to, to do that with the project and, and not touch High Ridge Road, I don't wanna build on High Ridge Road, although we have the ability, I don't think it's the best suited for the site, um, so I'd like to keep things the way they are, and I've tried to communicate with the abutters and give them my personal cellphone if there was any issues, and I do think that, uh, Gibson Road is only gonna get better, you know, it's, it's as bad as it's gonna be right now, uh, I don't see any construction happening on Gibson for, you know, probably till the spring, I would guess, only because I need to complete the work on eighty-six, uh, before I could even move forward, and our planning board meeting isn't till, uh, the middle of January, then there's, you know, an appeal period for that, so, you know, we're probably not even looking till February even before we could get a building permit, um, and, you know, then start some utility work and stuff like that, but I think we're probably looking at spring before we would really start anything, but, um, thanks for your time and consideration.
Absolutely, thank you.
Uh, just to recap the, the benefits of the, the improvements to, uh, Gibson Road, with the, with the pavement, there will be easier access for the trash removal, uh, we will be contacting the utilities for construction for our purposes, and for the abutters' purpose, they'll, they'll probably raise the wires or relocate the, uh, the poles of the wires that are out there, uh, the stormwater management will, will provide, you know, a, a better control of the runoff, mitigate what we're gonna be doing, also, there's gonna be, uh, erosion control, possibly, we may be able to put the erosion control up even before construction, the kinda, the hay bales may mitigate some of the, the stormwater runoff during the winter too, if we could get that in place too.
Thank you. Any final comments? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on the, uh, proposal? Would you rather have further discussion? Would you prefer to have any further discussion amongst the board? Clearly, this is a difficult decision.
Yes, I, I will state, I'll, I'll state my feelings, uh, I'm not opposed, I see no problem with single family versus two-family. I think everything that's been done here has been done in very good faith, um, whatever we've put forth at the last meeting, the petitioner has come back and tried to, to take care of everything, uh, and I get a strong feeling that if there was a problem with any of the abutters, he would definitely go ahead and try to remediate that problem. The problem I have is that, in its current situation, because of the impact that's already been on the abutters, and the, and the potential impact going forward, as it sits now, I cannot support it, and if indeed I saw something that remediated that impact, then the project as such, there'd be no impact to his neighbors or the abutters, then I would be for the project, but as it sits right now, I can't support it.
Okay, Mr. Marin?
I, I would echo, um, Mr. Chacolo's comments on, on I think that we have, um, an extremely conscientious, um, and diligent, uh, owner, uh, who is, is certainly trying to respond, um, issue by issue, um, and, and kind of work within this scenario. Um, I, I'm torn with, um, quite frankly, the, the idea of, of whether or not it's, it's single or, or, and I, I do take into account the, the comments of the abutters that it shared, that they have a strong opinion that they'd like single family, um, I think that that has further impact on High Ridge Road, um, and how that builds out, and so I have, I have concerns about adding, you know, additional, um, build out to the area. I think this is a smart design, uh, but, um, I don't know that, um, that we're gonna be able to solve what needs to be done now, the, the remediation of, of what's already been impacted, so I would, I would share Mr. Chacolo's comments, that I, I think that this is certainly a willing participant to react and do the right things. I would, I would make the suggestion, uh, that we would hold approval, um, or, or, or hold a position, if, if that's even possible, until, um, we get, um, some direction from a planning board approval.
Mr. Chairman, um, a suggestion might be to, for the current time, um, withdraw this application without prejudice until such time as the concerns that we have about the impact that you've had or will have are addressed, and that may only be thirty days away, um, where, where that impact will be addressed by another board, um, so I would offer that as a suggestion, if you wanted to withdraw it without prejudice, um, because there may be changes that, again, you may be, I'm gonna use the term forced to make, uh, in your remediation plan, so I offer that.
Okay. Ms. Blais?
Uh, I'm personally satisfied with the answers that you gave, um, for the, you know, problems that you've come up with, uh, that, the, the solving of the issues that are coming forth, I mean, nobody can predict the future a million percent, but, um, you know, I personally am satisfied with what you've proposed.
Ms. Roach?
Um, I would agree that I think that this plan is better than the first one, um, I would also agree that I would not want a two-family next to me in my neighborhood. But... But I also think that conditions that we could set, and again, I don't deny that the planning board would do what they need to do as far as the water and the drainage, it seems like you already have to address this wall to even continue on the other existing I'm just torn between the abutters and what they have already purchased and invested in, and, but I do think that developing it and putting in the road and paving it and getting the drainage that you need definitely would improve some of the issues that you're having right now. But I'm also torn with approving something that I know that you guys don't want, but if it can get you less water, less mud, a paved road, I think it can also be an improvement overall for the neighborhood. There's no question that during the construction and during the time now, like they said, it's as worse as it's going to get. I do believe that it's only going to get better from here, but I also don't want a house next door.
Thank you. So I'd just like to stop by saying thank you to everyone, really. The applicants did a fantastic job of being open-minded, presenting the changes that we've requested, et cetera. The abutters for listening intently and being civil through the entire process, we appreciate, and for the board for giving well-thought-out consideration and concern during this whole process. So thank you to everyone. And again, I don't really want to repeat everything that everybody said, but you can see the issues that we have set before us here and the difficult decision. So I think I have a little bit of each one of your concerns and my overall issue as well, so. I also think that Mr. Chacolo's recommendation might be a wise one as well. So I'd like to make a motion to reopen the public hearing for the purpose of discussion, if I could have a, if...
Motion to reopen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So with that being said, before we decide to take a vote, I think we're trying to give you an opportunity here if you would like to withdraw. Or again, I'm just trying to give you each opportunity before you so you can make an informed decision on what you'd like to do.
You can probably better explain to my client what the impacts are and how many votes we need, is it four out of the five approval?
Yes, four to five for approval.
Yes, so if we withdraw without prejudice, we can come back in. If we vote and get denied, we have to wait two years, correct?
Correct, or you could withdraw without prejudice, you could also request a continuation to revamp your plan, or you can, well, basically, or you can have us take a vote.
So I appreciate the feedback. At this point, I would like the board to vote. I do believe that we have presented the best plan possible, and I'd like to not delay any further on my project in general. I do believe that you could condition anything you felt necessary on putting the hay bale, silt fence, drainage, whatever, in place before maybe an occupancy or whatever, however you could do that. So I would prefer that we decide so I know which way to go here on my project.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We cannot, as a board, condition what we would have to condition because we would be deferring our vote essentially to another board, okay? We're not able to do that as a zoning board. If there was something in place, then we could condition it based upon what was in place. But being that there is nothing, there will be another board that will probably put something in place. We are not allowed as a zoning board to issue any special permit because that, the permitting authority ends up being the other board. So we cannot do that as a condition, and I understand what you were just saying. Please understand that from my point of view, the current situation exists. The only way it's going to change and get better is if you do do something and go ahead with your project. So if we need to remediate what exists now or what could possibly exist, you need to go ahead with your project for these people. But it needs to be, in your process of going forward with it, it needs to be in an engineered way so that it doesn't cause anything further. That information is going to come likely from another board or an engineer. Again, please understand that I want to see you go forward with this because that remediates what currently exists, which is what I would like to see. Then there is no impact on your neighbors.
It does make a difference, but I do think that the planning board has the discretion to take care of and condition the issues going forward, and really what I'm asking for tonight is duplexes or not.
Right.
So I think you can decide on that issue and let the planning board decide on the rest of the drainage and things like that at the next meeting.
Yeah, ultimately, that is correct. We are here to decide whether or not it's, it all boils down to duplexes or not.
That's right, and that's what I'm here for, and I'd rather just decide that. So I have a lot of things that have been waiting for months and months and months to move forward, and I need a direction.
I understand that.
So I appreciate the feedback, but I would like to know tonight.
Okay. So with that being said, do I have another motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion on the proposal?
I'll send a motion to approve.
Sorry, you gotta read it, I know.
Approved, Special Homes Incorporated requesting the special permit under section 3.2.2.1 from the zoning board, construction two-family dwellings on Elm Street.
All right, so we have a motion to approve on the floor, is there a second?
I have a second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are voting strictly on two-family or not.
Basically, yes, that's it.
I would have to vote in the affirmative.
Mr. Marin?
I would affirm, approve.
Okay, and I'm going to vote against, actually, but it doesn't really matter because we have a four to one, so the proposal passes. Okay? Congratulations, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Ma'am? We'll get you going, sorry for the delay.
We need to, we need to close anything we've opened and closed, so we need things...
Well, I'll just make sure before we start this one. Yeah, absolutely.
I was going to, Mr. Chairman, I was going to make the motion of a two or five-minute recess, but in light of this applicant being so patient all evening, then I'll refrain.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a 7:30, actually taking place at quarter of nine. Applicant Christopher Pallata of Pallata Family Realty Trust requesting a variance under section 7.6.5 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the relocation of a sign on property located at 888 Selfridge Street, Auburn, Mass., map 65 parcel 16. Is the applicant present?
I actually, my name's Leah Storiti, I work with Mass DOT, I'm a relocation agent, and I've assisted the applicant as well as several other landowners on the project as far as relocating signs. So our sign vendor did fill out the application, couldn't be here this evening, so I am here in his place.
Okay, thank you, but one second, do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, ma'am, if you could state your name and the apartment you work for, specifically for the record.
My name's Leah Storiti, it's L-E-A, last name is Sis and Sam, T-E-R-I-T-I.
Yes, okay.
I'm a relocation for the Mass Department of Transportation. And I actually do have a display board to show you, however, I don't have an easel to put them on. You can have...
If you could just actually just maybe face it towards us and prop it up in front of the microphone, I'm sure the camera could focus on. If you could just put it up right there, that would be fine.
All right. So you have this in your pocket, and any time I look, we thought we showed you the schematic that we drafted, where the sign, the existing sign was, the way we'd like to put it.
Mm-hmm.
The way this project was constructed, it was thought initially that the sign would not be in the way of construction. So the sidewalks and the curb got laid out and all the holes in the sign, one of the places the sign didn't back in the way. So I was called in and asked to relocate the sign. What we'd like to do is just move the sign back, and it will be in a question of temporary construction easement, and the resident in there has given us permission because essentially the construction in the area is done except for this corner of the sidewalk.
Sure.
Which can't be finished until we move the sign.
Yeah, we don't want anybody walking to the pole.
No.
Okay.
So we're just asking for, separately, we can set that requirement to move the sign back. And that's it.
Great, thank you, okay. Do I have any questions from members of the board? Mr. Chacolo?
None.
Mr. Marin?
None, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Blaze?
I have none, thank you.
Ms. Roach?
Just to be clear, the sign itself is not changing in any way.
Not at all.
Dimension, color, shape, size, nothing.
I know, the only thing that will change is new posts will be installed and the old ones removed. I believe the base, these base holes will be new.
Mm-hmm.
But the sign itself cannot change, in size, dimension, nothing.
Great, thank you very much.
No further questions, gentlemen.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on the proposal?
Motion to approve sign, moving of the sign, variance under section 7.6.5, the bylaws, motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome, good luck.
Thank you very much.
And thank you again for your patience this evening. Thank you very much.
Okay, can we move on to discussion? Do I have a motion open for discussion purposes?
Motion to open for discussion purposes.
So we have not had any further information, given, I think, the recent land purchase in town, the attorney has not come back with a decision at this point regarding the alternates and the vice chair. So as we had talked about it last month, that we would put it on the agenda for this month, but without the additional information, I think, from the attorney, that would be premature for us to do that. So I would table that until next month, again, if I could, please.
We just postpone it until we get that information.
Right, absolutely, okay. Do we have anything else?
I think we have some stuff to sign.
Yes, we have some signatures to take care of, we can do that after the closing of the meeting though. And also, before we do close, I'd like to welcome Anita Shaw. I believe you'll be taking the minutes for us from now on. Thank you very much, welcome aboard, I appreciate you being here, more than you know. It's been challenging the last few months. So with that being said, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
That motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, enjoy your holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
And we're just going to stick around for a few signatures.
Next meeting is...
Next meeting will be January 15th, 2015, if I can believe that, at 7:00 P.M.